Tom, go ahead.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 26, 2021. We started the meeting at 6:30 PM and went into executive session to discuss some cases in litigation. Where open discussion of the cases would have been against the interest of the town. So now we're coming back into the regular session. Can we have another roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present as well as town administrator and town council.
A pledge of allegiance. Let's see, who do we have out there? I've got to pick somebody on the screen, otherwise it's not going to work. Selectman Minis, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That may have been the fastest I've ever heard the pledge read. I think we're just going to designate you going forward. Uh, announcements, Alan.
Sorry, I was looking the other way. For information for the public, right now, the governor is doing a state of the state speech discussing things, especially the infrastructure. State budget, which obviously Mr. Sullivan has great interest in to see if they're really going to still project a 3.5% increase in. You know, local aid, my information is that they're really not sure what they're going to have for monies, etc., but we'll see what he has to say. I did visit Trade Roots with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Minis. And as Peter said before, it's a very impressive facility that's, I would estimate a minimum of $6 million invested already. And I can see why it's taken so long for Mr. Pitts and the other people to actually get this off the ground and running. It's not a simple project. It's quite a bit of the state of the art. A quick note for the public, February 1st, which is the beginning of next week, is when the 75 and older people can get their COVID shots. And I'll go into some more detail in a few minutes, but it's going to be interesting to see how this works out, and I'll explain it a little bit later. And I think also on February 1st, I believe the planning board is going to have a public hearing again to go over the zoning articles. The zoning article that had to do with the change of the possible zoning over by, really, we're a Rosyado company at one time. So they're going to have a second public hearing on that because they had some changes or some wording changed, so they want the public to have a shot at it. It will be up on the town website of the actual timeframe and also the Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick. Uh, you got to use your, you got to turn on your mic, Patrick.
Yeah, I don't have any real announcements except for, as everybody knows, Dennis DeMater passed away last week sadly. And also a fireman, David Wawstrom, which everybody knows very well, died of occupational cancer. Which means it was obviously related. So what I'd like to see us do is I would love to see the board authorize the lowering of the flag. For what? I think it's three days we're allowed, right? For the lowering of the flag in honor of those two gentlemen.
I agree. I'll second that as well. Patrick called me on this, and I think it's very appropriate for, you know, the fire department and the police person. You know, this is a pretty, it's a tough loss for the town. These are two really good people, and it's really a shame.
Yep.
Way too young to die.
And they were, they were both extremely well respected in their professions as well. They were exemplary. Both as a firefighter and in Dennis's case, a police officer. And of course Dennis continued with the town working in inspectional services or rather the Board of Health doing the rental inspections. So. Yeah, a big loss. Well, we have a motion from Patrick to lower the flag for three days to honor these two gentlemen, and a second from Alan. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Mr. Sullivan, if you could get that out. I don't know if you're going to be able to get it done for tomorrow, but if we could do it for three consecutive days, that would be very nice.
I'd like to see if you can reach out to the fire department also. Both answer them, Wareham.
We can, we will get a letter to them. In fact, we'll send an email out tonight saying that we've, we've done this. You know, to honor their fallen comrade. So thank, thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Patrick, anything else for announcements?
Uh, no, that's all I had. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Jim.
I'm bad.
Judy.
Yep, I've got some. Council on Aging offers several programs to the community. In addition to the five-day-a-week Meals on Wheels program, the Council on Aging also offers twice-a-week. Pickup lunches. You have to reserve the week before, but on a Tuesday and a Thursday. You can have a meal that you will pick up at the multi-service center at 9:30 in the morning. Call 508-291-3130. The council is also offering garden therapy, a do-it-yourself garden kit donated by the Wareham Garden Club. To reserve your kit, please call that same number. I'll give it to you again, as the number of kits is limited. Pickup will be on February 12th. Council is also hosting some AARP text preparation help on Fridays starting in March. You must call to reserve an appointment, which is being held at the Wareham Multi-Service Center. Mask and social distancing is required, and I'll give you the. Yeah, I'll give it to you now. 508-291-3130. Also available is the Sheriff's Safety Assurance Program to all Plymouth County residents. Each day, a computerized telephone call is placed to a participant at a specific time between the hours of 6:00 AM and noon. This is basically a wellness check. To enroll in this program or to enroll your parent or loved one in the program, call 508-830-6200. The Gleason family YMCA is holding a food distribution event on January 29th from 11:00 AM. As well as February 12th, starting at 1:00 AM, must be 11:00 AM, until the food is gone. You simply drive into the parking lot and the trunk of your car is loaded with the free food by volunteers. Because this is a very popular program, the Y suggests you plan to get to the parking lot early. It's at 33 Charge Pond Road. The Y has also instituted a new food distribution program. This program will start January 29th and is available Tuesdays and Thursdays. Fresh prepared food, which is culturally sensitive, will be distributed from 3:30 to 5:30 or until the food is gone. Program is open to children 18 and under. Church of the Good Shepherd High Street has a food pantry on February 2nd from 3:00 to 5:00. There will be no meal. The pickup meal on Thursday, January 28th, but the food pantry and the meals will resume in February. The food pantry is the first Tuesday of every month, and Thursday evening meals are available from 3:30 to 4:30. The onset four squares church has a soup kitchen every Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:00. Please pull up to the ramp to receive your meal. Other food programs have been mentioned regularly on these announcements, and they are now posted on the town's website. If you have a friend or a relative who does not have a computer, please print the information out for him or her. The community of Wareham is a very caring and generous community, and all of these programs demonstrate that, helping with food insecurity. There's a reminder from the clerk's office, dog licenses are available. Most residents receive information on the bottom of recent mailing. You can complete your registration by mail by providing a self-addressed stamped envelope, a copy of the current rabies certificate. And the fee, which is either $10 for a spayed animal or a non-spayed animal for $13. This, you are considered current in your applications through March 31st, and thereafter, there are penalties for late filing. If you're age 70 or older, you may register one dog for free. All other dogs are at the usual price.
Just to that point, if I could jump in, I did see something, I forget, I forget exactly who said what, but it was somewhere online in one of the Facebook community pages. And there was some suggestion that, you know, there was going to be another delay like there was last year in this, but you know. If people will remember, that delay happened because the clerk asked us for that. And we have not received such a request from the clerk. And so until the clerk asks us for a delay, then the due date is still April 1 to get your pooch licensed or you get to pay the extra. So. Don't, don't, just because you're written on Facebook doesn't mean it happened, you know.
Well, you also got a notification on the bottom of the latest mailings, so, so that you could in fact just turn around and mail it in, just the bottom of the census, I believe.
So until the clerk asks for it and we vote it, then it's just a regular license. Don't believe everything you read, folks.
That's it, thank you.
Anything else, Judy?
No.
Okay, that's it for announcements. Citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who want to address the board tonight. Please go to the chat function and say, identify yourself and say you would like to speak. I'll give it 30 seconds or so to see if anybody pops up. Okay, seeing no one, I will move down to board comments. Alan. You're muted.
Okay, again, like I said, I had my usual Tuesday meeting with the Lieutenant Governor and the CEOs of Mass Municipal Association. We get our information ahead of time, what's happening over the next 10 to 15 days usually. As I said, February 1st, they broke out the age group originally was going to be 65 and older last week. And what they did is they broke out 75 again, and it starts on February 1st as far as being able to have your COVID vaccine shots. As of tomorrow, you can sign up through the, we have a website for COVID-19 vaccinations of the state website. And they give you a list of all the different locations where you can go ahead and try and get registered to actually get a shot. And on February 15th, basically it'll be 65 and over, or anyone with two or more serious illnesses qualifies. What I did was, just for the hell of it today, I went ahead and went into the map, which they provide to show you where the locations are. Clicked on it, and I tried about five or six different locations out of curiosity, even though it doesn't officially start till tomorrow. And none of the locations are going to have anything available till the end of February at the earliest. So there is obviously a disconnect between what they're telling and what's happening. So. My, and also I called my primary care physician because it's also available supposedly a few shots. And that was South Coast Hospital, and they have no vaccines going to be available till at least the end of February. They have nothing that's in the pipeline. So I'm just going to let everybody know, yes, you can start signing up tomorrow. You're probably best betters to try, you know, Gillette. Or Fenway Park, the two big ones. There's a couple others out there that are not close by us at all. There's one coming supposedly to Plymouth, which might be the closest. So you're going to get frustrated. I apologize, but there's not much we can do. Basically, the federal government has not released enough vaccines for the demand that we have. We have the ability to give a lot more than we're going to have. So this is going to get, this really will be slower than what we expect. So please just don't get aggravated. It's just what it is. You're going to try and make phone calls tomorrow, go online. You're probably not going to get anywhere at all. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Jim.
Um, a couple weeks ago, one of, I think, Selectman Slavin said that the. Community aggregation program packets have been sent out. I haven't seen one yet. I wasn't signed up for the program last year, so I don't know, I don't want to be like enrolled unless I want to be enrolled. So if you don't, if you don't sign, if you don't send it back, then you're automatically enrolled, correct?
Yeah, you have to opt out, Jim.
Yeah, so if I don't get it, then, then if I don't receive it, then I can't opt out again.
Well, let's see if the other members have received it. I'll go right around the horn. Alan, have you gotten it?
Yes.
Judy.
No.
Patrick. Patrick, are you there? Okay, I've received it, so it apparently is getting out there.
Judy, were you in the program last year? Were you in the program, Judy?
I opted out.
And so it looks like the two people that opted out didn't get the renewal.
So we need to get, yeah, we'll need to get ahold of the company and find out if someone opted out, they basically continue to be opted out or not. It is, it is a new program again because it's renewed for 35 months.
Right.
It is a savings of 12% of the existing prices right now.
And I think we had discussed possibly having a link on the website to that so that we could. You can opt in anytime, can't you?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
There's an enrollment period, I think, Jim.
Okay, well.
An opt-out period, if you will.
It'd be nice to get the info up on the website also, if we could, I think.
Like, if I can find my copy and stuff, I'll bring it in tomorrow and drop it off at Town Hall and see if Matt can put it up on the town website. But we, we need to call the, you know, the company that we're hooked in, but now, you know, for that 35-month period, we're proud of 25 other communities. And get it up there. It seems strange to me that everybody didn't automatically get it.
Yeah, myself, too.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm definitely enrolled, and I definitely saved a few bucks last year. I mean, you know.
Wasn't a lot.
All, but, you know, it was, it was enough to make it worthwhile.
Yeah, it'd be more than shit.
I didn't enroll, and I thought I was saving a penny a kilowatt hour.
It goes up, it goes down. No, it goes up, it levels off. It goes up again. It doesn't go down.
It's competitive, so your supplier is going to, you know, keep their rate somewhere in touch with what the aggregate is going to do. That's how I see it. And then, Selectman Slavin again was talking about the COVID stuff. I'm surprised someone who works for the, for the Commonwealth told me they had received a shot, and they were younger than me.
Yep.
And I was like, well, you know, I know what they do and this and that. And it was just, you know, I'm like, wow, it's just one of those wow moments, I guess.
It depends on what their job was, Jim. Certain positions are in the phase one.
Right. And for me, it was that I did not see the position warranting. Being moved up, but that's just my perspective.
Just going to look at the list.
There's also a certain amount of got lucky in that the, when they were doing the first responder vaccines, when they were done with the first responders. They actually, rather than losing the vaccines.
Gave it.
Some of the, the communities did, some of their, their employees and things such as that. So you might have seen that with the Commonwealth as well. Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering. I don't really have anything else. I was just touching base on that, but thank you.
Thank you. Judy.
Yeah, I just want to mention that the flag at the Wareham Fire Department is already at half mast for David Wawstrom.
That's great.
Excellent. Okay. I, I'll, yeah, I'll just mention it. I know some of us participate on Facebook, and sometimes we get involved in answering questions. We have to be careful. I think we've all, we've all taken the bait a couple of times and maybe gone a little further than we should and, you know, offered to intercede with citizens. You know, things like this do happen. People get in touch with us. They ask us to help them out. And, you know, I think all of us try to be helpful people, so the natural instinct is to say yes, you know, I'll see what I can do for you. I think we do have to be careful, though, not to tread too far into the day-to-day sorts of things that the town administrator is in charge of. So it's just kind of a general reminder to, you know, be helpful, but, you know, make sure that Derek knows you're trying to be helpful, and that, that makes life a lot easier. Let's see, moving on, appointments, reappointments and interviews. We don't have any licenses and permits. We don't have any. Town business, COVID-19. Alan said a few things. Derek, do you have any better numbers to tell us about than last week?
Uh, yes and no.
Okay, well, let's hear the bad first.
Uh, we, we have had two additional deaths, which is now 15 over seven weeks. So obviously that's, that, that trend's not. That's, that's a negative trend we want to get out of. And however, the actual number of positive cases has declined where we were going over 100. It was now 74 from the last week. So, and so it looks like we're getting a little bit out of that, that post-holiday spike that we knew was, was coming.
Okay. Anything from the, from the board? Alan?
No, I've given you what I have so far. I'll give you some more information when we do the laser reports, some little more information.
Thank you. Patrick. Did we lose Patrick? Let's see, Jim?
Are you looking for more board comments, or what are you looking for here?
Yeah, do you have anything to say on the COVID update?
Oh, no, it's just, you know, no.
Okay, Judy.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, keep wearing the masks, social, just do, do the stuff you've been doing for the past nine months that have kept you alive so far. That'll continue to keep you alive. And that's what we want you to do, is stay alive. Trash disposal update. I'll turn this over to Derek, and I don't know if Jim has anything to say anymore. I guess that translates.
I do, but I, there's no sense in saying it if Derek covers it. So I'll let him take the, take the wheel.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the. See if I can pull it up to the. First, the letters that were sent out have been received. We know that from the amount of phone calls we're getting in. I would like to, you know, at this moment, I would like to honestly just step back and say, what a great person we have with Patty Neal. Working for the, working for the town. I know she's, she's my admin, but she's, she's an incredible person. Very, really great, patient person. And, you know, what was unexpected was we actually received a card. I shouldn't say we, she received a card from somebody she'd taken the time to explain. And it was a nice kitty cat card that when you opened it up, it said hugs coming in with the cat coming to hug. So. You know, that was, that was, that really, that meant a lot. So, you know, obviously people are, everyone's not, not everyone's excited about this. But it's a, it's something that's come together. I think people need to understand there was over 200 calls to the office today. And the average time that she spent with the person was about 17 minutes on the call. So. You know, and there's been some other departments. We do have some people calling from, one, they're done with her, calling other departments as well to. To, to, I guess, not necessarily ask more questions, but go try and get their point across as well. And certainly can do that. It's just, you know, I don't know that's the, the best use of, of time. But just wanted to give everybody the heads up on it. As of, let me see if I can pull this up. I just wanted to. See how many stickers we had. As of yesterday, we had sold 695 through the curbs, curbside program. 673 that were stickers that were transfer station stickers only and 174 stickers to Carver. I would expect after the next few weeks, you know, two weeks to really see the spike of this. It's interesting to see that the curbside and residential sticker are essentially neck and neck. So. And once, once we hit the, after that February 8th, that's when we'll start the processing of the automatic enrollment. So, and just a reminder, it's for all one, two and three unit residential properties. We had somebody bring forward that they had a four-unit property, and I don't know that they received the letter. They just reached out. And we let them, let them know that they did not qualify for it. And additionally condos, if you're in a condo association, I think we've gone over seven of them so far. If the association, you pay the association for trash and the association picks up the trash, that's a commercial operation and it's ineligible for the program. If the individual unit owner, which sometimes you'll see with sort of the freestanding condos, think, think Bay Point or Windward Pines, if you will. Those would, those are done by the, those are considered residential because it's the homeowners that are responsible for the trash. I know that's been a big question for a lot of people.
Okay, remarks on the board, Alan?
No, everything, everything seems to be going okay. We just have people that are, you know, it's, it's the same thing, you know, it's a, the comment is, I think the hardest comment is, you know, you're making me do something I don't want to do. You know, taxation without representation, etc. I understand how people feel. You know, I've made the comment before, we have a home in the water. Whether we like it or not, we have trash picked up there, you know, on a weekly basis. And we're there probably eight weeks a year, and we have to pay a quarterly thing every year whether we're there or not. It doesn't matter. You know, the, you know, you have a county government out there, the county commissioners vote here, and Wareham Town Meeting voted, so it's what it is.
Yep.
The majority of the calls, Mr. Chairman, are from seasonal homeowners.
Yeah. Not easy.
Yeah. Uh, Patrick.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I hear a lot of people and they're upset and they're, you know, they're whatever. But what they don't understand is like any new program, I don't care what program gets instituted, how it gets in place, what happens. It just takes a while for people to get into the groove. Once it's all up and running and everything's smooth and they got their stickers and the trash is running and everything. Everybody will say, you know, this worked out okay in the end. You know, I'm positive they will. But, you know, the, the people that are seasonal, they, they, you know. You know, that's the way it goes. I had somebody who's moving. And they said to me, well, I'm moving and I want, you know, I want to shut it off. I don't want to have anything. Well, what happens is, is if, when the time comes, and obviously it isn't now, they would, they would get charged. And then they would apportion it, just like they do water and taxes and all that kind of stuff if they'd already paid. So, you know, this will work out fine. Everybody just try to relax a little bit. Man, it just seems like everybody nowadays is just frazzled about little tiny changes. And of course, that probably has a lot to do with them all being locked up. So.
Yep. Judy.
Um, I just would add that mobile home parks will continue to use whatever contractor they're using because they fall outside of the program as well.
Yep. Yeah, the only thing I would, I would add is, you know, to the people out there who, you know. You have to understand, we, to the extent that people feel this has been inflicted upon them, we've had to inflict it upon ourselves. I mean, I could have, you know, listen, I, you know, I'm in a relationship with somebody who's in a different house in a different town. Very easy for me to grab the trash, throw it in the trunk and put it out and some, and let some other town pay for it. And I know plenty of people had those options and they were using those options. There were people who didn't have curbside and never got a transfer station sticker. Because they could bring it to work and throw it in the dumpster because the boss didn't care. Or, you know, they went and visited, you know, granny or something, and they threw in her trash or whatever. I get it, you know. We were all, we're all in the same circumstance here. You know, I don't, I've always had a transfer station sticker. But, you know, the idea of going from 40 to 125, I'm not happy about paying another 85 bucks and then dealing with bags. And frankly, I haven't even made up my mind which way I'm going to go. So, you know, we, we're sitting here having to make the same decisions, you know, as everybody else. We're not exempt from that. You know, just because, you know, we meet on Tuesday nights, you know, once this is over with, we go back to the same problems you have. We got trash to get rid of. How are we going to do it? Does it make sense to, to go with the bags? Selectman Whiteside, she likes to take those trips to the transfer station. Those are her outings. She enjoys them. Me, not so much. So I don't know, maybe I'll just say the heck with it and let, let somebody back up the hill with their big garbage truck and pick up my trash after I wheel it out of the garage. I don't know. But we're, we're all in the same boat, too. We're no different than the rest of the people here. And as much as, as much as this program is, you know, it's much more expensive than what certainly transfer station people were dealing with before. It's still a significant savings over what would have happened had we done nothing at all and just left everybody to the mercy of curbside. Through the private companies. And so, you know, we tried to put the economies of scale to work for the most people. That's what our responsibility is to do, is to help the most people we can. In the process, some people aren't going to be happy, some people, it's not going to. In the process, some people aren't going to be happy, some people, it's not going to be equitable for every single person, but that unfortunately is the way things go, so.
So, no, I, I was waiting for, for everything to kind of get through. You know, someone called me, actually emailed me the other day and, you know, went down to the transfer station, everybody's great, it worked well, everybody's polite, helpful. And, you know, spoke of kiddingly about the infamous blue bags. And, but, you know, he said it was, it was, you know, it was good. And of course, like you said, the cost, it's a stick of shock, but we all know it was going to be coming. The party was over, the free rider was over. And. Vehicle counts or what were they, sixteen hundred for the week, were they, Derek? About under seventeen hundred, I thought.
Yeah, the.
Go ahead.
Just to go over, so if you remember, before, before we had the blue bags, that first week, the blue bags weren't available, it was two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine cars. Then the following week was one thousand six hundred and sixty cars. And then this week it was surprisingly close to one thousand six hundred and seventy-five cars. So, that, that's, yeah, it was pretty. Pretty interesting, actually, the, and Saturday, which I, if I'm trying, I'm trying to remember weather wise, that was actually a load, it wasn't a very high differential day. It was on about three hundred and ninety cars or something.
Actually drove down there Saturday morning at like eight, because that's one of the peak times. And it used to be also when they were changing the dumpsters, which used to be at like eleven thirty. There was no line. One vehicle was coming out. And it, the, the split is eighty percent Wareham so far and twenty percent Carver. Do we differentiate on the stickers?
Carver pay, Wareham's at one twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five, Carver's a hundred and forty.
The, the actual sticker, the color, does it say like C or no?
Carver, it's the same color, Carver says, I, I think Carver says CR.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to check, so.
Good, I, I didn't know, I was just wondering.
Yeah, we wanted to be able to differentiate.
No, good, good. And, you know, it's, I think as Patrick said, you know, hey, we're just going through it, it's our first time through it. We can make adjustments as we move forward. Maybe we can take care of some of the concerns people are having, maybe not. Who knows what'll be happening in another year, year and a half? I mean, right now, we're at what, sixteen hundred? What's the total number? It's about fourteen hundred people, users, and half of those are curbside, right? So, we'll have to see how things turn out. Thanks.
You know, Jim, that's probably one of the biggest points. And I remember being asked at town meeting floor, there was a lot of good questions and trying to explain to folks, we can, we can try and estimate who's gonna go curbside and who's going to go to the, the transfer station only based on previous habits. But until we actually get people logging in and making the choice, we truly won't know.
So where are all these other people? We used to have like four thousand cars a week, didn't we? Going through last year.
One right here, one right here, I haven't opted yet.
Yeah, but, so where, what are they doing with the trash?
Jim, I would, I would say they were not all from Wareham, Carver, or Marion, or. That's just my guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess we're there, done with that. Discussion regarding marijuana host community agreement procedure. You know, we started licensing these places back in twenty eighteen. And of course, the process, we laid out a, a process, especially for the three retail licenses, because, well, we wanted this to, these decisions to, or the recommendations anyway, to be made by professional people so that there wouldn't be any accusations. They've had this one, or we wouldn't find ourselves, I mean, not that any of the people that have been on the board then or now would ever get themselves into it, but the whole Fall River mess with their mayor and the whole nine yards. But, but the question going forward is, what do we want to, to have for a marijuana host community agreement procedure? Do we want to interview every person who's looking to do a marijuana business in the town? Have them come in here and, and talk to us first? Is that part of something that we want to have? As part of the discussion leading into the authorization to enter into negotiations? When we designate Ken Buckland and Derek to, to do that? So, you know, these were questions that a couple of the members, you know, wanted brought forward. So I figured I'd put it out here and talk about it and see where we could go. So I'll start off with Jim, because I think he was the first one that had questions.
Yeah, so I was kind of, you know, trying to bone up on, on the information online and recommendations by the Commonwealth on the process and things you should and shouldn't do. But the ones kind of germane to the night, I think anyhow would be, as long as we don't do anything that's contrary to the law, that we're allowed to have a process. Am I correct on that? And.
I'll throw it to Rich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. You know, as long as you're not violating commission regulations or state law, you can do what you want.
So, I, I think we should have a, an application, like a one-page summary that comes in, one or two pages, comes into the selectmen's office. And that way we kind of get a timestamp of when it's been submitted to the town of, of people of interest, who they are, the name of the business, EIN, blah, 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 blah. Maybe the principals on, on it. Some other things, the type of licenses, you know, being sought. I don't know if it's necessary that they have a place of business at that point in time, at least from what I've read, but it is when they do apply to the state. I could be wrong there. It should be a set turnaround time. You apply, as long as everything is there in the packet when you apply, there should have an expectation that the town is going to process it within a period of time. We had, I don't know if it would be social equity, but a female applicant. And eight months, nine months. And I don't know how many other social equity or, or other applicants we've had, is recommendations on trying to balance out and, and to make sure that we, we give people an equal opportunity. So turnaround time, I was looking at sixty days, I don't know if that's reasonable, as long as it's not on, as long as they provide all the information we need. We approve it, and then, then turnaround time would be for the host community agreement. And then public outreach meeting, notification, newspapers, fine, we're supposed to be notified. I was surprised to find out there was an outreach meeting last week. It says in the paper, selectmen are notified, we're not getting notified. I don't know why we are not getting notified. And.
Well, that should be coming, that should be coming directly from the would-be applicant.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I have not received any notifications, if any, it might have been one, through the selectmen's office of when the public outreach meeting was going to be held.
Well, if they're notifying, planning and community development, I would assume that, that Ken would forward that to us, so. Well, I'll have to check with him and, and see if he's even getting the notification.
And I, and I request, I, you know, I think we, I think they put the notice in the paper, I'm not sure though. So we, you can, we can check on that. And I, I did speak with the office briefly on it and, and they don't recall receiving anything in the mail or sending anything, but they're gonna look into it. So there's, there's a disconnect somewhere there. And I think it's important, and the state regs say it's important that we too participate if we can in the hearings, but it's difficult for us to keep track of every single thing that's going on. And they should be put on the calendars, the town calendars too, not just published in the paper. And maybe notification sent out through the town notices. So, the pub, public outreach meeting, I mean, should we do it like five-thirty when they do it on the Tuesdays before the selectmen? I mean, there should be like a, a set time if we want to be able to participate in a fashion, which would be, we're, we're kind of getting ready and ramping up for our meeting anyhow. That's just a suggestion, nothing hold fast, just these are suggestions. Again, one, one of the things, if, if there's a failure to notify appropriate boards or other public agencies who should be notified by the applicant, they can go back to step one of notice for the public outreach meetings. So, those are some ideas. I did that this afternoon from, in about, you know, I read it over the weekend and it's a lot to digest. And I, I would like to further discuss also just the marijuana. Not tonight. How, how, now that we're what, three years in, marijuana, the, the number of licenses, stores, locations, has perceptions changed? And let's take another look at it, what we're doing and where we're going with it. Thank you.
Well, I'll go around, Alan?
Well, obviously the Cannabis Control Commission has a very long set of rules and they've been pushing hard for minority equality, for getting positions in places. We had a discussion a few weeks ago about the, a manufacturer being able to sell directly to the retail public delivering. There was an organization for that particular group that went ahead, as Peter mentioned, would most likely sue the Cannabis Control Commission, which did happen. And of course, the suit was actually dropped by that group. And now that the people are working together to see if they come up with some kind of settlement. So the issue is still in the hands of the Cannabis Control Commission. As far as the, the whole thing goes, it's really pretty black and white how it goes. I know that when this first came up, my suggestion back at the original time was to have somebody handle up to the host agreement, you know, without the selectmen involved. So because, again, because of the Fall River, not only Fall River, but a couple of licenses that were given out north of us, Braintree and elsewhere, there were certain people who were in politics that somehow procured two or three licenses. I'm sure, I'm not sure if anybody remembers all that.
Oh, I know. Miss Representative was one of them.
Yeah, and it all got thrown out and stuff and, and they went back to square one and everything else. So, but when we get to the host agreement, I, I understand what Jim's getting at. I believe that when they do the actual public outreach, I think it does go into Ken's office, but maybe it gets somehow, you know, delayed or bypassed to get to us. But again, I, I think that what we need to have is, we need to have some information in front of us. And we go ahead and to say, okay, we'll go ahead with this host agreement. We're limited, it's what we can actually do or say, because the regulations are there. It's like you, you can't really prevent somebody from locating, you know, in certain ways, now the things. There's no real limit to, to medical, there's no limit to manufacturing, there's no limit to growing. The limit really is strictly on retail. By the way, the town meeting voted and what the planning board came through based on the twenty percent rather than just unlimited. Because there are some communities in Massachusetts that have no limit on the number of retail operations. So my only piece that I like to see is, it makes me nervous when someone applies and I'm not sure who they really are or who their investors are. I made the comment before and I would like to see somehow that, at least when it comes to us, it's almost like a Cory check to see actually who's really involved in what it is. Because there's a lot of people that put money in the background, that someone comes up and basically they're getting licensed as a minority. And what it is, is when the place gets done, set up everything else, some big company comes in and buys them out. Because they already have a pre-agree, a pre-made agreement which we'll never know about. That's it.
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt on that one. Isn't, Alan, doesn't, isn't that the Cannabis Control Commission that does the background checks?
They do, they do that to a certain point, but we don't see anything at all.
And it's not that we can't do it.
No, I'm just wondering, why, why would you say no to somebody? Under what guise?
Depending on the background of people involved. Like I say, if you see the investors involved, you can tell whether or not this particular organization is really going to be there, you know, four, five, six months down the road.
Do, do we have to grant a community host agreement? That's at our discretion, am I correct or incorrect through you, Chairman Titlebaum?
Yeah, to counsel.
No, you're correct. It's, it's not a given. And, and that's something that they need.
No choice, they have to have it. If, if we don't give it to them, they can come back at us and give a legitimate reason why we did not grant it though.
Oh, I'm just, you know, so go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. Patrick?
All right, so I, I'm just going through my, you can be something here, community, DG, a bunch of these things. I'm going through my email because I've gotten lots of notices about these outreach meetings. I've never missed one, just so you know. I, I see them all the time, they come through because I think they're required by law to send it to us. I'm almost positive that that's the case. And, and frankly, I've seen them and I know you can miss them. And, you know, they, they, you know, it's kind of like you see something and you just kind of blow it away, you know, I, I have. Sometimes, you know how you go down your email and it's like you got a fifty million of them, so you just kind of go blah, 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 blah. And you can miss them because there's no special marking. Right. You know, that's what this is, you know what I mean? You gotta go into the thing to read it and understand what it is. But I've gotten those notices.
Patrick, if you've got those, can you let us know who you're getting them from and see if the rest of the board's copied on that?
Yeah, I can do it, I can look in my trash. I just looked in my trash. And if I put in outreach as, as being in the, what do you call it, as being in the, the, the thing, you know?
I've received these from proponents and also from Ken as well, just, you know, the only one I know that I did not get was the last one. I never saw anything on that.
There was one from Xiphias, X-I-P-H-I-A-S outreach meeting.
It's got to be about three years old.
Yeah, well, I, these go all the way back, I've got them all the way back. You can be, what was that one? You can be something or another there. You know, I, I haven't opened, I'd have to open them all, but I'm just kind of reading the edges of them. But there's, I, I must have in here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, probably twelve different notifications of outreach meetings. So they've been coming, I don't know why I might be getting them and you guys aren't. I mean, that must, somebody's dropping the ball there. But they all seem to come right from the clients too. I never get them from, from Ken or anybody, they seem to come right from the clients.
They should come to the BOS, correct?
I would think, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I'll go in and open some of them and figure it out and I'll let you know. You know what I mean? Because you gotta wait for it, it takes a, takes a while to upload it and all that, so.
Yeah.
When you're looking at trash.
Patrick, when you find them, why don't you just forward them all to BOS and then that way, you know, we,
Okay.
everybody has them at least on, you know.
Yeah, I'll pull them out and send them off and then you can see where they came from. But I'm pretty sure, if I remember right, they all come from the clients. It's just that right now you have to, you know, if you click on it, it takes a while to open it and I, it'll take me a bit to do that, but I'll get it done.
So, getting, getting back.
Should be a better form of notification for sure.
Right, and then put it on the calendar and, and put it up on the, send it out to the public as we normally would through other meetings. And, you know, you can have it sent to your email. So, you know, the, the public and the residents. So they'll, they'd be notified, otherwise it's buried in, in the newspaper in the back. You might catch it, you might not. I, I just, you know, I've missed a number of them and it, and I try to stay on top of things and I think one time, at ten in the morning. So, I just, you know, I'd like to see some consistency in how we do it and have a process, a set process.
Yeah, it would be nice if they were consistent and they had the same headings and, you know, whatever, it would be nice. Be easier to find and all that, so.
And the reason I ask that it starts at the selectmen's office, just so that we know that there's a date, a starting date. You can automatically go Can automatically go to, to whoever you want, uh, whoever we want to process it, but have a timeframe, so it's not ten months out or eight months out.
Well, and they have to come to us because we have to authorize the host agreement anyway. Otherwise they don't get one, you know, so.
But I, I don't know why it was.
So you're right.
Six months, it, it shouldn't, those, those host agreements are kind of, I, I don't know, are they pretty much boilerplate and you just kind of finesse it a little? And, um, so I, I don't think it should take as long as it has, that's all. And I'd like to see a, a, a time period so that w- we're kind of moving in that direction to try to get these things done as expediently as we can. Um, that's all.
Okay, thanks. Uh, anything further? Judy?
I have seen the notifications, not all of them, but I have seen some of them. And I think it's the way that they've been addressed to the town. But I will look into it because Jim raises some very good points.
Yep. Okay, anything else on this?
One minute, Peter, I'm just, I, I had a call from, uh, the office, so.
Good old week for Derek.
Sorry, we're, um, with the, with all the, uh, snow, we're bringing in the, uh, hired plows now, so.
Is that much out there?
Yeah, about three inches and just trying to, you know, it'll probably be a little bit warm tomorrow, but with the, with the, some of the conditions, it's, it's a right call. We know, we know Dave was, uh, isn't somebody to, uh, pull, pull the panic button.
That's for sure.
No.
Derek, does that mean there's a snow emergency?
There's no emergency.
Yeah, we know what that is.
Okay.
So just a few things, Mr. Chairman, from, from my, my perspective looking at this, uh, I understand the idea of the timeframe. I don't like timeframes because that provides a, a legal expectation of something. Uh, you know, I don't think that we're starting to, to set up our own internal laws on it, which, uh, makes me, so wha- what happens if something happens on the sixtieth day or, or, or there's been some issue? What happens if we, we, I mean, these background investigations, I'm looking at who's going to do those, um, who's the? What's that?
Who does that Cory's now?
No, this isn't just a Cory's are, we, there's, so we gotta then kick up money for the cost of the Cory's. This is, we can't Cory these people.
We can't?
No, what, under what, what guise? Uh, that's, and what Mr. Slavin's talking about is a financial background investigation into owners and going into who owns what percentage of, of, of what, and what are we going to determine on what is a suitable person? Um, I'm, I'm getting really concerned as to, and I guess it would be more of a legal counsel this. I'm getting really concerned as to, are we setting ourselves up for, for failures on some of these? Uh, if it were a, if it were a selectman that was in there in the, the background, I guess that would be something they, they should have notified or, or something like that. If it's myself in the background, I could see how that would be a major, you know, a major issue applying for a town with no, no notification, but if there's a, another business or something, why, why does that disqualify them? And I'm, I'm just really, I'm getting concerned, the, the path we're going down and creating, creating something. Now, I had about thirty of the managers on, on, uh, were talking about this and I think only about four communities had a real policy where you, you had to go through and, and really go, uh, the deep dive on this. Uh, it's, I think we're, we're sort of taking the, uh, taking a sledgehammer to, to kill a fly as we've used, used that phrase before.
But, you know, we, um, but if I may, um, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
For, for a liquor license, right? Um, what, what do we require for that?
What do we, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, these are, we don't have any more retail licenses.
No, but, but if someone wants to transfer, what do we require? Or, uh, 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 liquor, uh, manager at a restaurant, what do we require?
Cory.
Yeah.
Cory, uh, license, address.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, and you can't, you, you have to be, you have to be a citizen of the United States in order to, um, do the liquor licenses? Or the whole one? I, I was reading, uh, maybe through, uh, Attorney Bowen. And so I'm just saying, we're just so lax on this and it's, it's as much as, um, controlling, not controlled substances, alcohol, you know, um, so I, I don't think we should be so laissez faire about it, if that's the right, uh, the, the, the right words to use. And the state requires, uh, notification of anyone who owns more than ten percent to be listed on their application. So basically we're trying to like, asking, we're giving, we're giving them an opportunity to get their stuff together beforehand. Um, and, and these are just suggestions. And also the state, uh, are the ones that said, uh, it's not a bad idea, uh, if you read through the regs, to have timelines so that you just don't like, you know, drag things out forever and ever. And it's not pointing a finger at anyone. It's just the way things happen, but if you know that you have a timeframe in which to work in, you're gonna get it, more than likely gonna get it done. If it's no fault of the applicant, he can say, hey, how we doing? Or you know that that date's coming up. Uh, we can move forward, um, so I'm just, you know, just my observations, I, I'd like to tighten things up a little bit. That's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, please.
Uh, well, just a couple of thoughts on it. Uh, I think what we ought to do is, we have to start by thinking about what, what is our role in the process? Uh, now we do have a role because they have to come to us for the host agreement. So we, we have a place in the process. Uh, our place in the pro- in this process is different than it is, for example, when we do liquor licenses, because when you look at chapter one thirty-eight, uh, in the definition section, I think in section one or two, uh, we're the licensing authority, well, we, the Board of Selectmen is the licensing authority there. Whereas under the marijuana, uh, laws, we're not the licensing authority, we're there as a, we're an entity that has to be dealt with in terms of host community agreements, but we're not doing the licensing, so, you see a lot more process of, uh, associated with things like liquor licenses, even common vexoral licenses, uh, where we're also the licensing authorities than you see in marijuana. So, uh, we don't necessarily have the authority to get into it in the level of detail that we would if we were doing liquor licenses or common vic licenses. However, uh, we do have a seat at the table and that does entitle us to some, um, information. Now, if we're gonna come up with a policy, I wouldn't call it an application process, because that begins to make it sound like we're acting as a licensing authority. That's not what we're doing. We're, we, we are receiving a request for them to consider entering into a host agreement. So I think if we title it something like that, we're gonna avoid some heartache with the Marijuana Commission. Uh, I think we're entitled to know who we're dealing with. Uh, and I think we certainly could ask them, uh, you know, if, if it's a corporation, uh, name of the corporation, the officers, the shareholders. Uh, and presumably that would catch everybody who has a beneficial interest. If it's a partnership, probably won't be. You know, who are all the general and limited partners? We could ask them to disclose everybody who has a beneficial interest, I think, just because I think we have a right to know who we're, we're dealing with. When you get into things like Cory, that becomes a little more problematic, because then we're kind of acting more like a licensing authority. And I think at that point, we have to rely on the, the actual licensing authority, which is the, the state agency. But certainly I think there are things that we can do, uh, that will flesh out who we're dealing with and, uh, if we're gonna put timeframes in by which we anticipate acting, uh, we can express those timeframes, uh, I'm trying to think of the word I want, aspirationally. You know, we aspire, yeah, I mean, we aspire to get it done within, uh, you know, by date X. Which is our way of saying, yeah, we hope to get it done by then, but if we don't, you can't sue us. So you, you know what I'm saying with that kind of thing. So our role's a little bit different. I don't think our seat is as big as it is in some other matters, but there's a seat there and it might be worth, uh, Derek had mentioned that there were, I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, but it sounded as if there were four communities that were maybe a little bit more into it than some of the others. Might be worth getting a look at what they're doing and seeing if that's something we could work with. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, why don't, yeah, Derek, why don't, and the other thing too is I probably should have invited Director Buckland to this conversation because what we've, uh, been doing is essentially, you know, these people say, you know, they, they, they go to Ken usually. They present some kind of a business plan or something like that, or, you know, their proposal for a host community agreement and you have the community outreach meeting. Then we vote to authorize negotiations, then, you know, Derek and Ken come back with a proposed host community agreement that Rich has taken a look at. And then we ultimately vote on it. Um, you know, you know, with that in mind, I, I think, uh, I think it would be good to solicit Ken's input, so I, I should have had him here for this as well, so. Why don't we, why don't we leave it that, uh, you know, Rich and Derek will try to take a look and see what these other four towns are doing when they're ready, they can, we can come back on, we can get Ken involved in it too. And, uh, you know, see what we can come up with, see if there's, see if there's an, you know, get his thoughts on whether there's a need for process, additional process or, or not. And then go from there and, and see what we can do.
So, yeah, I, I, I agree that it's, it's good to get Ken's input. Um, I think we do need a process. And in my position here, I think that should be considered. But I, I think it does need to be a little more, um, streamlined and, um, I know Ri- Rich needs to sign off and saying he's, he's looked at it and, and it's approved. And, um, I, I'm not, I'm, I, I'm just saying, I, sometimes it takes a long time and I, I don't know if they should at this point in time.
Okay.
And, and we, there's, we need to work to improve that and to move these forward and to make sure notification is getting done, uh, properly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this? Alan? Turn on your mic, Alan.
Uh, as Derek mentioned, uh, having a fixed timeline is nice, but there's gotta be some kind of statement. You know, because there's so many different variables that come in at the late part, you know, the process. We see it all the time in our own, you know, planning, zoning and conservation committees, that they have a set timeline, but they have to ask for extensions, et cetera. Yeah, but, but the reason why I'm asking for, what I'm asking for is, I just would like to know a little more about who's actually applying. You know, I'm not looking to sit there and delve down to see whether someone, you know, did something over ten years old or something like that. Because basically the marijuana stuff, uh, the state actually gives a priority. If you've been arrested for marijuana, you know, when you've been arrested, you get, you have a priority, they want to go ahead and put you in business. You know, because they figure you know what you're doing. I, I laugh when I say it, but it's really the truth. So what I'm asking for is, I think, is people go, uh, looking at it as if I'm asking for, you know, as if something crime is gonna happen or not. It's just that we've seen with certain organizations, we approve someone with a host agreement and they come in and we have, within a, a two-year period of time, we've had the ownership of a place changed three or four times. And we really don't know who we're dealing with down the line, that's all.
Okay, well, we'll.
It's, it's simple as that. I'm not gonna make life miserable for anyone, because the bottom line is if we get overly restricted with the host agreement, we do get in trouble.
Yeah, well, well, plus the other thing too is people won't want to come here, which is, you know, self-destructive. So, yeah, we'll, we'll come back to this once, you know, Attorney Bowen and Derek have a chance to mull it over and maybe look at a few things, we'll, we'll bring it back.
Again, I'm, I'm looking to improve our process.
Yeah.
Make it more difficult.
Well, I, I think that message we'll, we'll get across.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okeydoke. We're pretty good on that one. Uh, we have a ratification of hirings here.
Yep, I move that we ratify the hiring of Timothy Bernardo as a mechanic for municipal maintenance. Steven Canucci, laborer for municipal maintenance. Chris Reben, laborer for municipal maintenance and Lawrence Taggart Jr. as a paramedic.
Okay, we have a motion to ratify by Judy. Four people, is there a second?
Second by Alan.
Okay, seconded by Alan. Any, uh, questions, remarks, comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, welcome aboard to these people. Uh, okay, next, we have a.
That we accept the generous dinner donation to the Wareham Free Library from Noah Young in the amount of fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to accept a gift from Noah Young. Is there a second? Second by Jim, motion by Judy. Uh, thank you, Noah. Uh, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero, and thank you again. Mr. Young, Mr. Young's very active in the community, so this is no shock to see his name attached to a donation. Uh, any other town business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the posting of the meeting? Alan?
No.
Patrick?
Uh, no.
Jim?
No.
Judy?
No way.
No way, okay. With authority. Uh, myself, no. Uh, Town Administrator Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have today is, or yesterday's when our, um, our budgets do. I have all the budget information, but in one of the, um, sort of nutty crossovers, we don't even have the, the state's initial budget to know where our, uh, where our local aid stands, even for estimates. So it's, uh, tonight was the, uh, the sort of state of our, state of the Commonwealth address. I'm hoping to get some hints. We've heard three and a half percent, uh, for, for general government aid, uh, from the, uh, from, uh, the, the LT, but we'll, we'll see if that, if that is actual. So usually, I think, Alan, after this, usually we get something from the MMA by, uh, by Friday, if not Monday. And what I'd really like to do is just see where the first round of estimates, because it's not just the revenues, it's the, it's the charges and assessments from the, the Commonwealth that's gonna make a big difference. And, uh, I've got things pretty well set, but if there's a sudden six hundred thousand dollar deficit, I, I think it's foolish to put forth a budget that we're just going to, to hack apart in a, in a matter of days, so. Uh, what's the thoughts of the board?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, Alan.
Uh, I talked to Derek about this earlier, you know, we have a dates that we have to do this by, you know, the, you know, charter, et cetera. Uh, we can't go by these dates, even though it's in black and white, because the state just actually finalized their twenty twenty-one budget. So how, how can you expect people to put things together? The school department has to have a budget done. Derek has to do a capital planning, has to do something in place. It's impossible to write, so whatever extra time Mr. Sullivan needs, I'm all for it.
Patrick?
All right, I have no problem with it at all. I'm very familiar, obviously, uh, with how difficult this is, so I'm okay.
Jim?
Um, has a school bud- has a school department, uh, provided us with the budget already?
They, they, they gave an initial number and then voted a second, uh, reduced number.
Right.
So I have that.
Right, so, I mean, um, I understand what you're saying. And, um, you know, a week or two, but I, I really don't want to go out until, um, March or April.
Gotcha.
And, and, you know, capital plan, uh, what, what we would like to get. Um, and then we don't have the money, so we're gonna have to take things off, you just kind of line item out. So, you know, that's just where I am. Thank you.
The capital one is usually the, um, as you know, we really haven't been doing anything through the actual budget for capital, we've been doing that through, uh, through free cash. And for examples, things like, just so everybody understands, sometimes, well, it's not sometimes, we do a holdback in our free cash from the, um, for snow and ice. Last year was a really great year, but calling out the plows for, although it's a reduced amount, can cost you $20,000 to $30,000 at a whack. So just so everybody understands, then that's probably a four-hour, four-hour run, not a full eight-hour run. Um, so why, I'm often explaining to people why we hold back money from free cash and why, why we do certain things. Well, the answer is, the, especially snow and ice, that's the one budget you're allowed to deficit spend. And if you remember, knock on wood, we don't have this. We had a year where you didn't have any snow until suddenly February rolled around and it didn't stop snowing for three weeks, so. Um, but sorry, that, that was a long-winded explanation.
No, it's the most un, it's the most unpredictable variable, I mean, you don't know, especially in New England, you really don't know. I mean, one year you could have 10 inches of snow, the next year you could have 110. So we saw that in 2015, we got absolutely lit up with snow. National Guard digging herself, for God's sake, so, you know, that could happen, and when that does happen, it's a lot of money, so it's a good thing you do hold it back.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big argument in my household when my kids say that they, they want snow and I yell, no, it costs too much money.
Well, we'll pray for snow in North Attleboro, how's that?
Yeah, thank you.
Can I all go there? Uh, Judy, anything?
I have confidence that Mr. Sullivan and his team will produce whatever financial information is available as soon as it is available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have anything to add, obviously, without, without the some sense of the state, it would just be, the numbers would be fanciful at this point. So hopefully the state can come up with something, an initial budget proposal, and you can work off of that and get us something.
Yeah, I mean, the, and, uh, the goal is to have the budget basically established off of these numbers. There's a couple of variables that, that are looking in our favor. Um, so just, I don't want to go through this, like I said, the, the angst of, of talking about cuts or, or, um, you know, saying things are fine and then the, you know, a few days later they're not. I just said, you know, so I, I appreciate your, your willingness to work on this matter.
You know, good, anything else, uh, from your report?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Liaison Initiative Reports, Alan?
You're not, you're not muted, unmuted.
Alan, you gotta turn on.
Derek, we had noise in the background, you did it. February 8th, the, uh, we'll get a review of the current restrictions that we're dealing with as far as the COVID. Uh, we're looking at a strong chance of a possible relaxation of, of the rules and regulations that we're under now. Uh, again, I'll mention that your local primary physician is supposed to be able to give you, uh, the COVID vaccine shots, but you're gonna have to again, check with your, your doctors to see what really is gonna happen. Uh, South Coast Rail, we have a meeting, uh, tomorrow, Middleborough, uh, to talk about the, uh, new station there and the new project itself. And I'm hoping in that particular meeting, there'll be some more information as far as the spur from Middleborough to Wareham and Buzzes Bay as part of the commuter rail piece. That's it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Patrick?
Um, I really have nothing to say right now. Uh, we, there, the school, obviously, we're negotiating with the teachers right now, but obviously information can't be released, so I can't tell you what's going on there. Um, but, uh, also, uh, you know, the committee continues to work towards, uh, an RFP for the, uh, police station, so we're working on it, where stuff's going.
Great, thank you. Uh, Jim?
Um, had an Affordable Housing Trust meeting today, uh, just focused on the, um, housing production plan, so we can get that off our desk. Um, I guess it's been hanging around since 18. So, um, I, I pulled a meeting in the middle of the month and said, you know, we gotta get moving on this. So, uh, everybody, you know, we, we had a quorum, so we showed up and just went through it. And, uh, we're gonna do it again in two weeks at a regular meeting, try to get that, uh, wrapped up and, uh, to Mr. Buckland and to the Commonwealth, so we can be, you know, get the stamp of approval that we, it's done. Um, that's it.
Thank you, Judy?
Um, may I just ask Mr. Muni's a question? Where, where are we on the, um, the house that we're waiting for the deed restriction on?
Well, we, we hammered out, um, through the efforts of, uh, Attorney Bowen and, and, um, attorneys for the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the other holders, um, the, the, um, rider and or, uh, joiner agreement, i- it's called. And I asked for one document that's always referenced, um, global, the global agreement, so that if you ask me for it, I can say, this is what it is. Um, so the, the joiner agreement's just one page, says how much we gave it, gave towards the project, you know, um, the deed and the book and the page and, um, and that we're going to be part, party to the deed restriction held by the four Commonwealth agencies, um, which has a 51-year restriction. So I'm waiting for one little piece and I've asked twice the last two days. So if you ask me, well, what's this global jo- joiner agreement? I can say, well, this is, this is what it actually is.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything in particular to report. Uh, let's see, uh, we do have one set of meeting minutes?
Yes, we do, I move that we approve the minutes of January 12th, 2021, everyone was present at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve minutes by Judy, seconded by Patrick. And questions, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the ball tonight. Motion to adjourn by, the adjourning selectman, seconded by Judy. Roll call vote, Alan?
Us.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Oh, please.
Okay, uh, myself, yes, uh, there will be another executive session next week. Uh, I don't know whether it's gonna be at 6:00 or 6:30, but I'll get that out to the rest of you as soon as I know, and also to WCTV. Uh, thank you, everybody, and good night, Wareham.
Good night.